Good evening, and thank you for viewing the May 18th meeting of the Arcata City Council. The city council meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting with both in-person attendance and teleconference access via Zoom. If you would like to, please join us for the flag salute.
For the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Atkins Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
And Councilmember Watson is absent, but we do have a quorum.
Thank you. If you wish to make a comment during the meeting, either at the two open public comment periods, or for an individual agenda item, there are three ways to do so. If you are here in person, please line up behind the podium when the item you would like to speak on is accepting public comment. If you are logged on to Zoom, click Raise Your Hand when it is time for public comment on the item you wish to speak on. If you are on the phone, press *9 on your phone to raise your hand. When it is your turn, you will be prompted to dial *6 on your phone. That will unmute you. For each item, we will be taking in-person public comment first, and then move to the online comments. We won't be going back and forth, so when the time comes, please be ready and lined up so that we can get to you and also be sure that you raise your hand online. And we have been doing things, up until this point, we were doing online first and in-person, and we're switching it up, and we're going to in-person first. But I'll remind when we get to that. So, Item 3 is Ceremonial Matters. And with these, what we'll do is, the councilperson will read the proclamation, and then meet the person accepting it down off the dais, and then you can accept it and move over to the podium if you want to say a little bit about it. And I do need to sign both of those. So first, we have a proclamation in the honor of Kinetic Sculpture Racing for May 28th, 2002, and this will be read by our Vice Mayor Schaefer. And we also have Jennifer Thielander in person to accept.
In honor of kinetic sculpture racing, May 28th, 2022. Whereas the art of the sport of kinetic sculpture racing, difficult to truly comprehend, but easy to enjoy, is a Humboldt tradition originating in Ferndale. Sorry, got a little feedback. There we go. Originating Ferndale and spreading like wildfire to other parts of Planet Earth. And whereas the kinetic tradition has been part of the Humboldt County life since 1969, with at least one kinetic race starting on the Arcata Plaza for the last 50 years. And whereas the glorious founder of all kinetic sculpture racing, Hobart Brown, a Ferndale artist envisioned a three-day triathlon of the art world, from Arcata through Eureka to Ferndale, over land, sand, mud, and water, and coined many a phrase such as "adults having fun so children will want to grow older, and if you're not living on the edge, you're taking up too much space." And whereas the Kinetic Grand Championship is a tribute to a rich history of kinetic racing in Humboldt County, Kinetic Universe, the Kinetic Grand Championship's nonprofit organizing body, works to promote the tradition and values of kinetic sculpture racing in Humboldt County. And whereas several other cities across the nation have kinetic sculpture races inspired by Humboldt County's mother race, unusually held every Memorial Day weekend, recognizing that this art event involves the whole community, family, and community, while also promoting tourism, sustainability, bicycling, and silliness. The race enhances our community's image, both nationally and internationally. And whereas kinetic sculpture racing encourages the recycling of junk and tidying up of our environment while exploring sustainable transportation, as a creative solution to greenhouse gas-emitting vehicles, thus fighting global climate change. And whereas Kinetic Universe presents the triumphant return of the Kinetic Grand Championship after a two-year hiatus that will challenge creativity, provide opportunities for artists and artistic discovery, and lift community spirit and pride, resulting in the most glorious weekend of the year. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Arcata hereby congratulates Kinetic Universe on its glorious and dedicated stewardship of the uniquely Humboldtian tradition of the kinetic sculpture race. The council encourages everyone to attend the kickoff to the 2022 Grand Championship on Saturday, May 28th, 2022, on the Arcata Plaza at noon. For the glory. Signed by Stacey Atkins Salazar, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Schaefer. Next, we have a proclamation in honor of Older American Month, May of 2022, and this will be read by Councilmember Matthews. And we have Maggie Kraft here in person to accept.
Proclamation, the City of Arcata, in honor of Older Americans' Month, May 2022. Whereas older adults play vital, positive roles in our communities, as family members, friends, mentors, volunteers, civic leaders, members of the workforce, and more. And whereas diverse communities are strong communities, and ensuring that older adults remain involved and included for as long as possible benefits everyone. And whereas just as every person is unique, so too is how they age and how they choose to do it. There is no right way. And whereas it benefits everyone when older adults can age in their communities, living independently for as long as possible and participating in the ways they choose. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Arcata recognizes May 2022 to be Older Americans' Month, and urges residents to take time to recognize older adults who are aging their way and serving our community. Dated May 18th, 2022, signed by Stacey Atkins Salazar, Mayor.
One of the first handshakes I've had in a couple of years. I appreciate it was fine. Eye sanitizer is fine. It's just getting back used to that. It's something. But yes, thank you so much. I really appreciate this proclamation. It's been a couple of years, and we know that COVID has had a huge impact on both the older adults in our community, but also the younger ones. And it makes me realize and think about that, you know, life is a continuum, and we're all, we all start out young, and if things go well, we will end up living a long and productive and happy life. But we need to help all of our citizens at all across the continuum. So I really encourage you to take advantage of the wealth of knowledge that is out there with older adults. If you're looking to hire people, older adults are great employees. And I just want to thank you again for this opportunity to be here today, and I wish you all well. Age your own way. Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie. And you're absolutely free to stay and enjoy the meeting if you'd like, or you're also free to go, and we won't be offended. So, okay, all right. You've got other things to check out here. Good. So next on our agenda is early oral communication. This 15-minute time period is provided for people to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. At the conclusion of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements. Any request that requires council action will be set by the council for a future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers addressing the council at this time are limited to two minutes. Please make your way to the podium if you're wanting to speak, or if you're online, raise your Zoom hand, or press *9 if you're calling in by phone, and that will raise your hand.
Hello, council, staff, members of the citizenry, both in person and in the ether. My name is Joanne McGary, but when I hold this earth flag, I like to be known as McGreta, because Greta Thunberg is a true inspiration to me. And I know that there is an item on the agenda that I will hopefully speak to at a later date, but I just wanted to introduce myself at this moment as McGreta. And I really appreciate, normally I don't like ceremonial matters at the city council meeting, but these two actually touch me in a way, because kinetic sculpture is talking about doing things differently without fossil fuels in a fun and enriching way. And it's a historically beautiful sample, example of Humboldt County doing things cleverly, creatively, and in the vanguard. So I just would like you to remember that concept of being in the vanguard of things. And then the aging concept. I'm actually officially old and wise, I would like to think. But it is really true on the continuum that there is a lot of wealth of knowledge that we can gain from everybody, everywhere, no matter how old they are or where they come from. And so tonight, I would like to applaud the fact that the kinetic sculpture and the Area 1 Agency on Aging were acknowledged tonight for this. So McGreta will be speaking to you later.
Thank you, Joanne. Okay, seeing no other in person, we'll move to online comments. And again, these are items that are not on the agenda. All right, our first speaker is Patricia. Oh. Which one? Okay. Go ahead, Patricia.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. So, yeah, so last night, I listened to the Transportation Safety Committee meeting, and there was a presentation, I know they were running a little short on time on their meeting, so it was a short presentation, but they did a presentation on the 8th and 9th Street Improvement Project, and it was really refreshing, the plaza, I know the Plaza Improvement Task Force has done a lot of hard work on those two streets, and some of the ideas of making them one-way, and bike, you know, a little bit more bike-friendly and pedestrian-friendly. They had a chart that talked about this external outreach, and they mentioned doing a working group and a community workshop for that improvement project. And that was really encouraging as well. I'm kind of hoping that that will also be applied to the K Street and L Street couplets. And I know kind of the community involvement portion of the Gateway Plan has been a little bit or a lot lacking, and we were, I know in the early Gateway presentations, threats were mentioned, but now we're not doing threats. Also, in the Plan West proposal for the Gateway, it listed threats as being part of the public engagement. We're also waiting for the 3D modeling that we've been told is coming, solar shadowing models that we've been told are coming. Study session, the study session with the council and the Planning Commission still has not been, there's still not been a date applied to that. And then, of course, the, no, we can't forget about the post-its and dots with the open house. We're still waiting for those results. So it'd be nice to kind of see something happening, and the community kind of...
Hey, Patricia, I'm not sure if you were able to hear the timer, but that's your time. But we will have another opportunity at the end for items that are on the agenda if you would like to speak again.
That kind of wrapped it up anyways.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure to make it to my first council meeting today. I am here to announce to the community of Arcata that the Oyster Festival is coming back, and it's live and in-person this year. It's going to be a three-day event, which Saturday, June 25th, is going to be the biggest day. We are not just going zero-waste this year, we are going eco-positive and encouraging everybody in Arcata and throughout Humboldt County to go eco-positive, meaning composting locally, supporting businesses like Full Cycle Compost, six guys on a bicycle going around and picking up compost and composting it locally, all reusable utensils. You're going to get a free cup when you walk in, and it's going to be in the circus tent down in the Creamery District this year. We're looking for volunteers and sponsors right now, so if anybody is interested in sponsorship or volunteering and helping us with one of the second-biggest events in our area next to the Kinetics Festival, Arcata Main Street is going to be your place to go. And my name is Carly, and I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody has for that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Carly. All right, next is Jim. Go ahead, Jim.
Hello, staff, fellow council. I would like to request of the councils, to request of the staff, to present an update on the public input that has been gathered since the release of the Gateway Draft back in December, early 2021. Back in December, we were promised meaningful engagements in which the community input would be reflected in the Gateway Plan. We still face uncertainty about building height, size, scale, setbacks, stepbacks, all effects solar shadowing. On that note, months ago, the solar shadowing renderings were promised by staff, and I would like to know the status of those renderings. Finally, it's apparent that form-based codes are being developed already by Plan West. This should be a reflection of robust community engagements, as in the case of Redwood City's Community Plan. I hope the information on community input will be forthcoming. And that's about it, and thank you. Appreciate what you do.
Thank you, Jim. No other online early oral communications. Next, we have the consent calendar. So all matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. So we have A, approve the minutes of the city council meeting of May 4th, 2022; B, biweekly report on general warrants; and C, approve Amendment Number 1 to the Memorandum of Understanding with the Yurok Indian Housing Authority; Number 3, LLC, and authorize the city manager to execute necessary documents. Would any council member like to remove an item from the consent calendar? Is there any member of the public or staff that would like to request an item be removed? Okay, so is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent calendar.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. So that takes us into old business. We have Item A, which is Adopt Resolution Number 212-60, Establishing and Improving a Complete Streets Policy Within the City of Arcata. Can we have a staff report from our city engineer, Nate Recuttry, please?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember, staff, and the members of the public here and in the Zoom. This is the follow-up from our last meeting in April 20. We brought this item, Complete Street Policy. Goal is to, again, develop and create a balanced and equitable transportation system in City of Arcata for all users. We've been working on this policy for the last eight months. It was brought to our attention late 2021 by CRTP. Just to consider the item, we brought this to TSC, and we received multiple comments at TSC from the members and the staff. We addressed those comments, and once the document was finalized, we took it to our website to get additional public comment in March. And we received some comments on those, and we addressed them, and we brought it to the council in April 20 for approval. However, there were still some language issues in that, and then on how to track the system. Like, we were planning to do the monitoring and reporting every three years, but most of the committee members at the TSC wanted to do it two years. So we made these changes, and this item was scheduled yesterday at TSC, and it got approved. So now it's approved by TSC. Still, there are some comments that we received. However, at the end, we decided that this is not the perfect policy. In the next one year, one year or two years, as we are implementing, we will learn something, and we'll be closely working with TSC. So if there are any changes to be made, we will work with them, and if they are warranted, we'll bring it back to you. With that, I would say approve this policy. And there are small changes I would suggest maybe at the end, but I would say at this time, maybe ask some questions if you have any on the policy, and then take some public comments. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate the Transportation Safety Committee for being so diligent about this. I'm glad they had a chance to look at it again and approve it last night. The only question that I have is maybe a little bit more clarity about what a disadvantaged community means, and maybe adding a little more context for that.
Yes, so that was the item I was going to discuss. So we have that language regarding disadvantaged community, and based on our research, there are multiple definitions of disadvantaged community, based on at least two of them. Our whole city is disadvantaged community. So based on recommendation from TSC and from the staff, we are committed to make minor adjustments to this policy, and we are requesting to maybe, from disadvantaged community, call it disadvantaged neighborhood, as defined by the city council, or maybe we can task Arcata Economic Development Committee to come up with zoning that, calling disadvantaged neighborhood, so we can use that as a language, I would say.
That's a fantastic idea. Thank you so much.
Any other questions from council? Okay, let's go ahead and see if we've got any members of the public waiting to comment. So again, we'll start with our in-person, so please do everybody who's wanting to talk, if you could line up. That would be great. All right, go ahead.
Good evening. I am Una Smith. I work for the Humboldt County Association of Governments. I am the senior regional planner there. And we fully support complete streets policies and are really happy that the city is the first to do it. Well, I'll say I am because I live in Arcata. But officially, we're supporting all our cities and our county to do it. And I'll just take this opportunity to kind of plug the benefits of complete streets, and I'm stealing these completely from the National Complete Streets Coalition. The top 10 benefits being, they help kids keep safe, because it makes walking and biking safer. It improves mobility for disabled community members. It improves mobility for older community members. It promotes physical activity, and therefore promotes the good health of our community. Complete streets make for a good ride, and that is not only bicycling, but they make good rides for transit riders, because bus stops and crossing the street becomes easier. Complete streets help fight climate change. They spark economic revitalization. They help members of the community save money on higher gas costs and lower transportation costs. They improve safety for everyone, and that way, they help create livable and financially sustainable cities and towns. So congratulations on considering this, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Una. Okay, let's go ahead and go to our online comments. All right, our first speaker is Colin. Go ahead, Colin.
Thanks. Good evening, councilmembers. This is Colin Fisk with CRTP, the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. As you all know, we strongly support this policy, and, you know, really, I can't say much more than Una already did. It's very exciting to have the first such policy adopted in our region, and there's, you know, a lot of good reasons to do it. So I won't repeat anything that Una said. I will say that I appreciate the question about disadvantaged communities, and we would definitely support, you know, the city developing a specific definition to allow more equitable implementation of the policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Colin. And our next speaker is Matt. Go ahead, Matt.
Hi, can you all hear me?
We can.
Hi, my name is Matt Simmons. I'm with the Redwood Coalition for Climate and Environmental Responsibility, or ROKER. I just want to completely echo everything Colin and Una said, completely support this policy, and really excited to see Arcata taking this step. I know I personally will enjoy having our streets be streets for everyone, and then not mostly carts. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. And no other public comment on Zoom.
All right. Well, I would proudly like to move to Adopt Resolution Number 212-60, Establishing and Improving a Complete Streets Policy Within the City of Arcata.
Second. Before I call for the vote, do we need to make any amendments for that language? We had a couple of small language changes made.
Yes, just on the page. No, thank you for that, but just a quick one. Page 34, paragraph number four, where it says disadvantaged community, we can just call that disadvantaged neighborhood, as defined by the city council or Arcata Economic Development Committee.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you could just put...
City council?
I don't think, I just would put disadvantaged neighborhood. And then, if the council's comfortable, we'll go ahead and bring that to the TSC and Economic Development Committee and come up with a definition.
I would adopt Resolution 212-60, Establishing and Improving a Complete Streets Policy Within the City of Arcata, with the amendment of changing the disadvantaged communities to say disadvantaged neighborhoods as...
Second.
Thank you.
Just giving Bridget a minute. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And motion passes. Next, we have Item B, which is Receive an Update on the Regional Climate Action Plan and Support the County of Humboldt in Proceeding with Environmental Review. Can we have a staff report from our Environmental Services Director, Emily Sinkorn, please?
Good evening, council and community members. Actually, standing in for Emily Sinkorn is Emily Benby, the other Emily, Deputy Director of Environmental Services. I am going to queue up a slideshow really quickly. Phew, what am I missing? Here we go. And with me today is David Loyah, Community Development Director, as well as Michael Richardson, Humboldt County Building and Planning Department; Katie Guerin, who is a consultant with EIAS, who assisted in preparation of the Climate Action Plan; virtually, I believe we have Asia Sisna, with Redwood Coast Energy Authority, as well as Jerome Carmen, yes? Great, with EIAS. So there's a lot of us, and we're in different modalities here. So I'm thrilled to have a strong team in this presentation. So providing a really high-level overview of the Climate Action Plan is the project goal, which is, what is a Climate Action Plan? It is a regional climate action plan adopted by each jurisdiction to reduce greenhouse gas emissions throughout Humboldt County. So the Climate Action Plan, to provide a little bit more context, I mentioned regional. That really does include all of the jurisdictions within Humboldt County, as well as the unincorporated area. As the staff report indicates, there was an MOU that was approved by city council back in April of 2019. So this has been a multi-year process. The process started after the MOU development, in holding community workshops, identifying implementation measures that the community had preferred, working on an inventory and forecast. The different representatives from all the jurisdictions came together to work on measure creation, selection, and the narrative, which brings us to today, April 2022. We have a public review draft of the Climate Action Plan, the intent being that that is the draft that will be used as the project description through the SEQA process. Next steps in the Climate Action Plan process include the completion of SEQA documents. The Humboldt County will be the lead agency, and the different jurisdictions would be trustee... and the different jurisdictions would be trustee agencies? Tiering agencies, trustee agencies. So they would essentially tier off of that main SEQA document and adopt their climate action plan after Humboldt County adopts the main climate action plan. And David can speak more to the specifics as questions come up with that as our SEQA lead. After SEQA is completed, there will be a public hearings to formalize that cap adoption. We expect the process to, the SEQA process, to be completed and caps ready for adoption in September of 2023. I'm going to stay very high level in my description of the cap itself, really focusing on some key elements as well as discussion of process. Certainly, we will be ready for discussion and question and answer, delving into any details of the cap as needed. But the intent is to really keep it high level and focus on overall milestones and process. So with that, one really big piece of the Climate Action Plan is that the recommended Humboldt County target is 40% below 1990 levels by 2030. That correlates to SB 1382, which is state law. In achieving that goal, we would be potentially considered a qualified cap. And so a qualified Climate Action Plan, or CAP, I'm toggling back and forth shorthand and full name. If the, if the cap is a qualified cap, it has the potential to streamline development review projects for projects that do comply with the cap and are encompassed by the cap. And so this is a really key distinction. This was something that on a staff level, we really struggled to come up with appropriate measure, measures that we felt were appropriate and feasible and also meeting this target. It was a really heavy lift. And so when we had come to city council back in December of 2021, we were uncertain, truthfully, whether we would be able to meet that mark. We worked extensively with our regional partners and with our consultants, as well as RCEA. And we are thrilled to say CAP as presented does meet that mark. And so we heard the community's value in developing that qualified cap. And so as it stands, the cap now would potentially constitute as being a qualified cap if it moves through the process and continues to meet that target. So I wanted to spend some time talking about that distinction. Another element that I thought would be helpful is to outline some of the cap workshops and presentations to date. There was a lot of public input, as I alluded to earlier, in development of measures, prioritizing different measures, getting input from the community of how Climate Action Plan could be developed for our region. So you'll see there's a series in 2019. 2020 was a year where we had a lot less development of the cap. That was due, I could say almost 100% to the impacts of COVID-19. Our efforts really slowed. We were all responding to that global pandemic that we still live with on a daily basis. And you'll see in 2021, there have been an increase in presentations. What you don't see on this list are all of the presentations that are happening May of this month. So all of the different jurisdictions are coming to their decision-making bodies, presenting the Climate Action Plan as an effort to increase public awareness and ensure decision-makers are on board at this point so that we can move forward into the SEQA process. I included top five implementation measures here. I'm going to flip to my staff report really quickly. Sorry for the delay. So the reason I included the top five implementation measures here is I wanted to speak a little bit to the largest generators of greenhouse gas emissions in the county and then speak a little bit to implementation measures. So most local emissions are generated by transportation, perhaps unsurprisingly, 53%. Fortunately, we have a number of transportation-related items on tonight's agenda to improve or, I should say, reduce those greenhouse gas emissions. Additional top contributors are livestock-related, building-related, and electricity consumption. And so transportation emissions reductions really need to be tackled on a regional level if they are to be affected. Livestock is certainly a heavy contributor. For Arcata, I would expect it's less, given that we have less livestock, less agriculture in city limits, though we do have some. The other thing I wanted to note is that Arcata contributes approximately 12% to overall greenhouse gas emissions, which is right on par with our typical share countywide for other things such as solid waste, for example. It lines right up with our population. So those are the heaviest greenhouse gas contributors. These top five implementation measures you'll see largely relate to transportation emissions reductions through replacing gas-powered vehicles with electric vehicles, as well as electrifying buildings, essentially. And so land use is a strong lever, as David has said in the past, that the city really has where we can effectively reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So I really wanted to focus on the fact that those top five implementation measures really largely reflect electrification and more specifically, building electrification. So next steps, as I indicated earlier, would be the commencement of the SEQA document. Humboldt County is the lead agency. And Humboldt County Association of Governments has secured some funding, which I expect you'll hear about later, to which we're very grateful for. In addition to having some funds for future implementation and monitoring of the Climate Action Plan. If I recall correctly, in December, Mayor Atkinson's, or one of your questions was, will this be monitored and how will that, how will that implementation roll out? The answer is yes, it will be monitored. The intent is to monitor at minimum every five years or no more than every five years. I expect that we will probably regionally tackle, so to speak, the monitoring component. I think that that will be achieved on a regional basis, though certainly pointing out that the different jurisdictions would be responsible for meeting their own targets. So that, there's a, there's a regional relationship certainly and a local responsibility or accountability. So with that, David, did I miss any key points?
Great job.
Okay. Then hearing no additional key points to the presentation, I would be happy to open it up for questions.
Emily, I love when you make presentations. They're so easily understood and clear. I am definitely just decided now that I'm passing my Leslie note picture over to you. My one question is, so, so after the SEQA document, and it comes back to us, can Arcata, is there any way? You said we could, every, play every city can adjust, right? And so is there any way that we can make ours even more stringent, I guess, than the regional?
Sure. So I can speak a little to that in a couple ways. And maybe, Michael, if there's any you'd like to add on, if you could approach the podium? I think that microphone is good, just making sure I cover my bases. So there is a potential for adaptive management. So that could speak to wanting to go above and beyond. And it could also speak to certain measures maybe not being as effective or more, as more effective than we anticipate. I do, we have learned from discussions with the Office OPR, who administers the SEQA guidelines essentially, that there is a lot of flexibility within the adaptive management framework that can happen without needing to restart the process or redo SEQA. So definitely, there is that potential. I think if Arcata wanted to go above and beyond, we could tier off of the regional cap and set our standards higher. I don't see any issues with that.
Yeah, good evening, City Council, Michael Richardson. I'm with Humboldt County Planning and Building Department. And Emily earlier talked about our, our government, our jurisdiction, taking the lead. And really, I wanted to recognize that Arcata is really taking the lead in climate action planning countywide. And, and so we're all being pulled along by you guys. So it's been just such a pleasure to work with David and Emily and really looking forward to jumping into this next phase, which will be super exciting. A lot of public engagement and some, some real wrestling of the issues, including some negotiations that are going to happen between the governments, trying to figure out who's in the best, the best position to take the lead in certain sectors and how, how we can figure out a good balance, a good way to fit the Climate Action Plan to Humboldt County at large. I don't have any other comments. I do unfortunately have to cover the Ferndale City Council meeting that's happening at 7 o'clock. And so I'm going to disappear in about five minutes.
Thank you so much.
If I could just add one thing to that, too. We did do a lot of work on this Climate Action Plan, as Emily mentioned earlier. And a lot of that work was around tweaking the specific measures. We didn't get into a lot of the detail in the backend, the Excel spreadsheets that are calculating this. And I certainly am not prepared to answer any questions about that. Jerome may be able to. It's a very large and complex spreadsheet, even daunting to me. But what I will say is that we really pushed the upper limits, I think. And I think we've got a really ambitious Climate Action Plan. The goals in there are very ambitious and the programs are very ambitious. And I know we may, you know, I'm excited to hear what, you know, folks in the community think about what we've done. And there certainly may be people who want us to go even further. But I do think that we've done a lot in the planning work to, to set very ambitious goals to date. And to the, to the SEQA process, I think Emily's spot on. For the most part, we can adaptively manage this and change things without completely throwing off the SEQA. And this is a nuance. It's probably going to be lost on most people. But to the extent that the streamlining is tied to specific programs, we may have to do a little bit of additional SEQA work on those to make sure that it's still a qualified cap if we change them.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. And shout out to Aisha Sisna. I know you've been working so hard on this at RCEA and I really appreciate you as well.
I was just going to ask. Go ahead.
Yeah, well, I was like trying to tease on my question and then you kind of answered it a bit, David. But, I mean, could you just elaborate just a little more? I'm just curious to kind of know, I guess, what the process of SEQA will be like, especially, you know, after, if, if the county wants to, you know, adopt a qualified cap, then, you know, how much more can we go and how much less? Like what wiggle room already exists within it being qualified? And then kind of the second prong of that is what does that SEQA process look like? And what opportunities for feedback from the community, et cetera, exist within that?
I'm going to, David. We're actually kind of putting our heads together about this next step as, as a group. And I think what we've, what we are hearing from the public is they really want a comprehensive engagement strategy, public engagement strategy. And so that'll be top of our agenda, to figure that out. And then as far as going bigger, after the county takes its, takes its action, if the city was to want to go a little bit bigger in terms of reducing greenhouse gas emissions, the only complication there would be whether or not it triggers any environmental impacts. And so we'll just need to be careful about how we evaluate that in the EIR.
Yeah, that was basically what I was going to say, just to give you an example. If, if we say we're going to add more electric vehicles to the fleet, there's probably not an environmental impact. If we say we're going to add more electric charging stations where you're actually constructing on the ground, you may have a bigger environmental impact. Not saying that there will be, but I'm just saying that's an example of how it depends on how, which measures we push forward and try and go bigger on, as to whether or not they'll have environmental impacts.
Great. No further questions. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for the presentation and thank you for remembering my question from December because I certainly do not remember asking that, but that was a great question. So thanks for bringing, thanks for answering it several months later. I appreciate that. And I don't have any others. So do we have any members of the public that are wanting to comment on this? And again, we'll take our in-person first, so please do line up for in-person and then we will go to online.
Good evening, excuse me, good evening, city council members and staff and everybody. My name's Paul Hagan. I'd like to comment briefly on the Climate Action Plan and introduce myself first. I guess the most pertinent thing to say is that for nine years, I was an Arcata Planning Commissioner, so I'm feeling a little ironic standing here. So I have a lot of expertise in the area. I've been doing environmental law since 1989, been living here in Humboldt County since 1999. I've read the Climate Action Report, been following things. Really just have, and I very much believe in local government. And I'm preaching to the choir a bit here. I understand that here in Arcata. And Climate Action Plan is, as you know, eight jurisdictions, all the local governments in Humboldt County. I only have really two main points, one of which you already know. And it refers to the authority of the local government, which is really land use authority more than anything else, which is how we get to the GHD stuff. The plan doesn't really address point sources so much, industrial emissions, because those are regulated by the air districts and their permits to operate. So it's really the transportation things and other stuff like this to get you the GHD measure here, and that all relates to land use. And so, excuse me, that's, that's the extent of the authority of the cities and the counties involved, for the most part. My second point to you is really, I really want people to think big, which is here's the preaching to the choir thing. But as we all know, probably there's this offshore wind energy project just 21 miles off the Humboldt Cove. There was just a California Energy Commission workshop this morning on it that I attended remotely. The point is that everything is accelerating extremely rapidly now in the whole energy area across the state and has been for a number of years. And it's picking up enormous speed, especially here in Humboldt County because of the wind energy area that's been certified out there in the Call area and the things that are coming with all the port infrastructure and so forth. That'll happen in the city of Eureka and it'll impact over here, too. So really, what I do want to do is draw your attention to things that are beyond your land use authority as a city because you do very, very well at that. And I really appreciate the remarks earlier this evening, how can we stretch ourselves within the CAP and go further than the rest, even after Michael Richardson said that the county's been following the city? In any event, my message is just remember there's enormous other things around the city and beyond your authority that's happening and to factor that in and to continue to be the leaders that you are. That's what I have to say. Thanks very much.
Thank you so much.
Hi, it's Magretta. And I, I'm quoting Greta Thunberg here in a speech she gave in Germany, I think in 2019. And she started out and continued to say throughout her speech, "We live in a strange world. We live in a strange world." I have to say, last night, this room was filled with people. On this issue of climate change and a climate action plan, it is a big, huge, urgent emergency issue. And Arcata needs to be out in full force talking about it because it's going to require huge changes in our behavior as a community and as individuals. I would like to say that I don't operate really well in bureaucracy. And looking at some of these slides here, the first thing about implementing is the word replace. The first word is reduce. Conservation, energy conservation, reducing greenhouse gas emissions, yes. But reducing how we use energy so frivolously in our world. So I would hope that Arcata be in the vanguard of getting our community rounded up because it's going to affect them. And I don't want them to hear about it down the line. They need to be at the front line talking about it. So this is really a time for Arcata and people, the citizenry. We all need to become essential citizens for the future, especially for those who are coming after us. Some of you have children. I don't. But I am here for them, for their future. And it's not going to be easy and convenient and pretty. And it's going to be hard and there's sacrifices that are going to need to be made. But I got to tell you, just me living the kind of life I've tried to start living, it's like enriching and it's, it feels really, really good. So it can happen and it can spread. But I just really want us to not live in a strange world. I want us to live in a communal world for the future. So this, get everybody involved. Do what you can as representatives of those people who voted for you or whatever, to get involved in this and get get involved in this and get out there in the community and talk to them about what we're going to need to do together to make a difference. And I don't want the tail wagging the dog. I want us all to start telling each other what we can do to make it better. So thank you for listening.
Thank you.
I am a new resident here, and I am thrilled to be here. I escaped a rather unsavory situation in the state of Florida, where I had been the Director of World Wildlife Fund for many decades. I wanted to share particularly with your staff, but also with you, that there was a different time in Florida, and we, with the assistance of the Center for Climate Strategies, developed an action plan on climate energy in 2008 through 2011. It was bipartisan, it was high level, and it adopted, it met the needs not just of looking at our greenhouse gas emissions and how we reduce those and the economic benefits of doing that, but it also discussed mitigation and adaptation strategies. So what I would like to do is to share that document, because it is probably one of the most comprehensive climate plans that has been written. And the Center for Climate Strategies is just an amazing group of, and their name is on this document. But as someone who has been through this process and knows what needs to be addressed and what your challenges will be, and I applaud you so much for undertaking this. Thank you. Thank you. I would be happy to get it to your staff so that you can reference that for any opportunity you may have to use it. And thank you.
Thank you, and welcome to our community. Okay, we'll go to online callers. All right. Our first speaker will be Matt. Go ahead, Matt.
Hi, everyone. Hello again. Matt Simmons from the Redwood Coalition for Climate and Environmental Responsibility, or ROKER. First off, I want to thank you for bringing this topic up. You know, climate action planning is essential for our future. I was one of the members of the public that advocated for a qualified action plan back when this issue came up in December, and so I'm really happy to see that it's, that the plan is, you know, following that direction. I think we all want to see this plan be impactful and not merely sit on the shelf. And so that's really fantastic. And I thought I'd just use a little bit of my remaining time to talk about some of the co-benefits of the things in this plan. It's not just about carbon. You know, electrifying our homes will create safer, you know, indoor air pollution. I was just reading a study today about people who grow up in homes with gas stoves, their children are a lot more likely to have asthma than people who grow up in homes with electric stoves. There are just so many things that, you know, we're all so used to surrounding us that use carbon and use greenhouse gases that are impacting all of our health. And this plan will hopefully help move Arcata and the rest of Humboldt County into a healthier and more promising future. So full support and excited to continue with the process.
Thank you, Matt. And our next speaker is Colin. Go ahead, Colin.
Thank you, and hello again. Colin Fisk with CRTP. And yeah, I think, first of all, I want to say I really appreciate all the work that staff has put in of Arcata and all the jurisdictions to develop this plan. I think it provides a strong foundation for future action. And, you know, of course, we will have additional comments. And, you know, in particular, you know, when, through the CEQA processes, through the deliberations that follow the CEQA process, I think that's sort of the appropriate time to, you know, work on making any changes that need to be made. But for now, as you saw, this plan has been, you know, in the works for almost four years now, and, you know, the target date is 2030. And, you know, the longer it would take to get it adopted and start implementing it, the harder it's going to be to meet those targets. So really, my message this evening is to just please support moving ahead to the CEQA process, and really also to take a look at the draft plan now and some of the implementation measures, and start thinking about adopting those things even before the final cap comes to you, because, you know, there's no reason to wait for a lot of these things that'll have great benefits immediately or as soon as we do them. Thank you.
Okay. Our next speaker is Patricia. Go ahead, Patricia.
Hi. I just want to voice my support for this. I think it's great. I, this is what I know and love about Arcata. I think it's just wonderful that we're pushing for, forward with this plan and really are becoming proactive. So I just kind of want to just say, you know, thank you for everybody that has put the hard work into this. And I came from a very, very environmental family, and this is, this is part of an Arcata. And this is, this is just phenomenal. You know, I just, I just really want to thank everybody for all the work and give my support and looking forward to what this brings and what we can contribute to some of the things our world is facing, you know, concerns our world is facing. So, and then maybe I'll put a plug in for solar. I know we're replacing, we want to replace gas with electric, which is great. And then hopefully, you know, we can really put a program out there that people can really encourage people to put solar panels in every home. So anyways, thank you all for all the.
Thank you, Patricia. And no more public comment. So we can also, we can take further questions or we can move forward. I don't believe that we, this is receive a staff report, so there's no need for a motion. Is that correct? Or are you, are you wanting something formal saying that we want to move on to the CEQA
I don't think a motion is required, but I do think it would be helpful if the council is so inclined to make a motion to the effect of Arcata's support in Humboldt County advancing the CEQA process, I think would be helpful.
Well, then I will make a motion to support the County of Humboldt in proceeding with the environmental review of the climate action plan.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right. There you go. And again, thank you. I know, Emily, you said it wasn't easy to get to the goals that you wanted, so thank you for pushing ahead. We appreciate that. Okay, so that takes us to new business, which is to receive an update from the Humboldt County Association of Governments on the Regional Early Action Planning Grant. So we have Una Smith here from HCOG to give us an update.
I'm Una Smith, Humboldt County Association of Governments, often called HCOG. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come back and update the council on this REAP grant program. Last January, I came to the council, which was a little bit of a different makeup then, and introduced this regional early action planning program. And then Mayor Sofia Pereira asked me to come back and report on the budget when that was approved. So here I am. So tonight, I will briefly recap what the REAP program is, and I will briefly go over housing planning needs and opportunities, and then I will present to you the approved budget and activities. So the REAP program, Regional Early Action Planning, was created by Governor Newsom in the 2018 budget, in which he gave money for housing planning activities, the goals of which were to increase housing and accelerate housing production. This was, I'm not sure if they used the fast track wording, but this was kind of responding in kind to the housing crisis statewide. So the way that this program was set up is that the REAP funding comes through the Housing and Community Development Department, which is a state-level department, usually called HCD by us planners. There are two big paths that the, that HCD gives funding to. First, they got a statewide contract, a very big contract for technical assistance. The winners who were awarded that were the Placeworks and the Institute for Local Government. And staff from Placeworks have worked with the City of Arcata staff in the past. So they made up a North team, and that North team is to help Humboldt County and some of our northern neighbors to help us with technical assistance. The HCD department is still working with that, so we actually haven't had any one-on-one technical assistance from the North team quite yet. The other funding path, the REAP program, by law, said that it was the COGS, the Councils of Governments statewide. And if there was an area that wasn't well-served by a COG, it would go through counties. And these regional or county entities would be responsible for administrating the money. And that is how your Regional Transportation Planning Agency, HCOG, became the housing money administrators. And all the money is divided statewide through a population-based formula, which gave our area $785,000. This is one-time REAP funding, and from the very beginning, I would say it has maybe just shy of four years to spend, but we are at least two years into this already. So the REAP funding goal is basically only through planning activities for this money, increase housing planning and facilitate and accelerate local housing production. So how does planning accelerate housing? Well, in the very beginning, I, of course, went out and asked stakeholders, what is it that are the barriers for our communities for giving, for having an adequate housing supply? And this is a word cloud, so the bigger ones were the more responses, and I don't think any of those will be any surprises. There's a lack of buildable land, but that would be for spreading out, I would say, not usually lack of land for building up necessarily. Aging infrastructure, aging housing. There are some strategies that governments have been trying the last couple of years, like infill and accessory dwelling units, but so far, we haven't quite figured out what precisely would make many homeowners want to do that or be able to do that. And then also, local planners are real savvy about the need for creating communities in a new paradigm, very much harkening back to the complete streets policy, but a new paradigm of having transportation work more for multi modes near where we want to get to go and not using our precious land to move cars fast. So with those kinds of needs, the answers, I hope you can see the link, the kind of planning that we can do to address those things, these were some of the responses that came up from, again, the stakeholders, which at this particular roundtable meeting was planning staff and community services department staff and one or two just general public members. And there are things like on this list, for example, if we had, regionally speaking, interjurisdictional coordination for how to meet housing needs on a regional basis, that kind of planning would help. Focusing on social justice and racial equity, that would help. Helping owners of large parcels be more interested in selling or being able to at least build relationships with them and learn from them. Basically, other things like that, supporting infrastructure development and CEQA exemptions for meeting housing element objectives, more developer stuff, and de-emphasizing large So the kind of multiple, multiple strategies for getting from the that needs cases to opportunity cases, basically, the state sees it this way, and this is what I see basically in the discourse of planners and former engineers and just housing and city-based advocates in general. We're looking to streamline approval processes or timelines, because this would appeal more to people who are interested in it and developers, reduce costs or financial barriers, and remove or mitigate regulatory barriers to development. So some of the examples that, and these are examples that the state acknowledges work and they recommend and support. You also might see that some of these things are in your gateway plan. So incentivize zoning and modify development standards, any kind of corridor planning, a little more concerted planning rather than what might happen to be haphazard planning when it's not well-planned in a neighborhood or corridor way. Offer supportive financing strategies. This could be anything from a local housing trust to maybe different fee waivers as incentives, and facilitate adequate infrastructure to support development. So this is really things that would, something on this menu would generally work for any of our communities in our state and in our county that are having a hard time supplying housing. So on to more of the details of the REAP program. HCOG, as the administrator, we are required to do these two overarching activities. We are to develop an education and outreach strategy. So this is to inform anything from neighbors to schoolteachers to planning commissioners and Board of Supervisors, I mean, everyone in the neighborhood basically who has a hand in helping housing. And it's also to increase the dialogue between communities about how do we really get to where we want to go, and basically address the threats and fears that often stall housing developments. And then we are also to identify best practices and then spread the word, and then also take cues from staff and others about things they would want to learn, and we would then invest resources for that kind of training. So here's the budget. I have three slides showing how the money has been approved, and this has come together through me having the good fortune of meeting monthly with a roundtable of planners and stakeholders in our community. And this is a really fabulous region to work in for the kind of collaboration and empathy that staff members and elected officials generally acknowledge and then really practice. So you'll see in the money that has come out that people are, even though very strapped for cash perpetually, people really are looking at the big picture. And for instance, David was one of the earlier people who, you know, to remind us explicitly, we don't get regional money that often, and it can be really powerful. So let's really talk about regional ways of doing this before just talking about, hey, maybe we just want to have another formula and spread it out, and we all go our own ways with our money. So the top 12,000, 22,000, 45,000. So the top $12,000, $22,000, $45,000 is basically for all that education and outreach and best practices and project management that mostly HCOG will be the lead on. And then we have these four items. I have enumerated here. One, disseminate the best practices, $58,000. Two, education and outreach on RENA, which is the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, compliance and the need for that, $74,000. I will note that we have a very, it's very neat program. We decided to have small grants to artists or whoever want to flex their artistic muscles to find new ways to tell housing needs stories. And we just closed that proposal call for projects, and we have 20 applicants now that we'll be looking at. And I just took a real quick glance at the proposal titles. And we have everything from someone who's proposing to do some music to tell some housing stories, someone's proposing to make a comic book. I think there are a few plays in there, some sculptures, some pop-ups. So we'll definitely be coming back with those things. All right. And then we have suballocations to local jurisdictions, $375,000. I will talk about that on the next slide. And then also, technical assistance and other activities, $199,000. That money is also being suballocated to jurisdictions. So the $375,000 bucket is the bulk of it going to help the regional cap. So first, we're taking $80,000 off the top for under-resourced agencies. That is to help the cities who have less than or only one full-time equivalent housing planner on staff. Then you can see under the regional cap, we have a little bit of money set aside to help any of the participants do their plan development or do plan adoption. Then the county is going to be the lead on the SEQA review. And then we're also going to be putting out a request for proposals for consultants to do a regional vehicle miles traveled tool. And then there's also $35,000 for an inter-agency regional cap coordinator. That might be one person, or that could be several people. It could be at one agency or many agencies. Then the other $199,000 that is being suballocated to the jurisdictions, this is where the different entities are more asking for what they need in really in their own agency. And this has been a very friendly, very modest ask. No one is requesting the lion's share. They're very willing to take the lowest amount. So anyway, of these entities, Arcata is asking for money for public engagement on form-based code and support. The range was anywhere from $20,000 to $50,000. And for right now, we're landing on a request for $25,000. So it's very, very likely that what everyone has asked on this, they're going to get. And you'll see at the bottom, there is still $46,000. Trinidad hasn't put in their request yet. But if there is a balance, that would, people could, you know, resubmit their requests. Or there also was an overarching desire for all agencies to, what they said was, hey, we could all use help applying for this new pro-housing designation, which gives a few more points at the state level for many different grant-funding opportunities. And that money left over would help anyone who came to the counter and said, help us with our pro-housing designation application. And then just, this is the last slide. This is what we see are the performance indicators that we will be tracking. And this is what I'm going to have to report to HCD. So our goal is for planning that will accommodate the development of housing and infrastructure. And in real practice, we're hoping to see savings from SEQA streamlining related to the cap and the VMT analysis. So that would be staff time savings, developer time savings, and savings just in money paying for the environmental review. Then we also have a goal to advance the state planning priorities for housing, transportation, equity, and climate goals. So we're hoping that we will see streamlining environmental review for infill development. And then lastly, the goal to affirmatively further fair housing. We're hoping that regionally, there's increased zone capacity that improves the jobs-housing balance. So that is the culmination of my prepared remarks, and I thank you for the opportunity of sharing this information with you.
Thank you, Una, for that report. I appreciate it. I know personally, I'm really interested in seeing if we can pursue the pro-housing designation. I know Director Loya and I sit in weekly housing meetings together, and anytime something comes up, I'm always messaging him in the chat. Can we do that? Can we do that? So I think we're very interested in, you know, in any and all things that we can do to promote housing in our area. So, thank you.
Yeah, just thank you so much. I don't have any further questions, but I just really wanted to comment and say that I appreciate, I mean, just seeing, you know, this is housing money, but using it for going towards the cap as well and just seeing the intersectionality between, you know, all of these issues that we face. And so it's really, you know, just nice to see, yeah, we're all going to work together on it, and it's going to make our community a better place to live for everybody. So just thank you so much for the presentation.
You're welcome. Just thank you for the presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do we have any members of the public that are wanting to comment on this item? Seeing no one in chambers, do we have anyone online?
No online comments.
All right, thank you. That takes us to Item B, to consider Resolution Number 212-67, placing the utility users' tax measure on the ballot for the election to be held November 8, 2022. Could we please have a staff report from our City Manager, Deemer?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. The item before you tonight is a resolution that would place a utility users' tax measure on the ballot for the November 8, 2022 election. This came out of a discussion that the council had at our goal-setting. Our current utility users' tax, the city actually has two components of our utility users' tax. And the first has been sort of the standard tax, which has been 3%. This tax has been in place since November of 1996. It's been approved by the voters of Arcata five times between '96 and the current tax that was approved in November of 2016. The city also has a component, which is called the excessive electricity use tax. When this was passed, most people referred to it as the grow-house tax. And it really was intended to both conserve electricity and to really open up housing that had been converted into growing cannabis in the residential sectors of our community. And it was very successful in terms of both of those, both of those goals really being met through that ballot measure. There are still anywhere between 35 and 55 houses that can hit that excessive electricity use in any given month. And it does still bring in, I think it's about $130,000 a year, $165,000 a year that we still do bring in from those households. Combined, the entire utility users' tax is a little over $1 million for the city. So what's before you tonight? What we discussed at Goals is though the current taxes do not expire until 2024, that there would be an advantage for us going early to the polls in 2022, given that we are coming out of the COVID pandemic. We've been trying to reestablish programs, reestablish staffing levels, and solidify our funding sources moving forward. This would also give us an opportunity to go back to the polls in 2024 if, for some reason that none of us could imagine tonight, that that tax measure was not successful. So before you tonight to consider is basically keeping the tax at the same 3% based on council input that was received during the goal-setting session. And we are typically, this tax has been for eight-year periods. So our suggestion to you is that we, based on, again, council input and community input, that we do have a sunset clause, but we expand that to 12 years, basically from the date of which the original one would expire. So it'd be 12 years from 2024. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. We certainly can talk about, you know, utility users' tax goes straight to our general fund. So it supports parks and police, parks, police, and planning. Those are our three main P's. But also supports streets and a lot of other sort of trails, all of our community recreation programs, you know, all of our base general fund programs are supported through the utility users' tax. So I would say, overall, statewide, we did do a quick review, and our utility users' tax is on the low side. I'd say the average is probably 5% to 6%, with the lowest I found, you know, around 2% and the highest upwards of 10%. But again, based on council conversation and sort of where utility rates are and where inflation is right now holding, was the recommendation there and is what is before you tonight in the resolution that's suggested. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, City Manager, Deemer. Do we have any questions? Okay, yeah, I think we're all, you know, we recently discussed this at goal-setting, and we're all on the same page to move forward. So let's go ahead and go to public input. Or go ahead, Council.
Actually, I was going to ask, but that can come with the motion. But do we need to, I mean, say anything about the sunset date? Or that's included in the proposed?
That is included in the resolution now.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
So we'll start with public input for anyone that is here in person? And seeing none, we'll go ahead and go to online?
And there's no online public input.
Okay, so we have a motion.
Great, I move that we consider.
Adopt resolution.
Adopt resolution. I'm having a rough run today. Okay, I move that we adopt Resolution Number 212-67, placing the utilities' users' tax measure on the ballot for the election to be held November 8, 2022.
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so this next time is provided for people to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. If you are in person and wanting to give public comment, please line up at the podium. If you, please raise your hand if you are on Zoom on the webinar or press *9 if you are on a phone line and would like to make a public comment. Speakers for this period are limited to three minutes.
Hi, it's Magretta. And I know I'm kind of a character here at the podium, but I'm serious about a lot of things. And so please accept my persona in public, in person, as it is. One of the things I really would like, because we are doing hybrid meetings right now, is, first of all, in council chambers, I'm having a hard time hearing, but that isn't just me, I don't think. And so maybe we can work on that. But I'd also like to know how many people are checking in to this meeting? Because, you know, it's sort of sparse here in person, but I'm understanding that maybe there's a lot of other people watching, or at least are zoomed in whether they're watching or not. But it would be sort of nice to kind of have an understanding of how much participation is happening at these meetings. But I really walked up here at this second part of a public comment to let the council members know that I did send a very potent, I felt, email to them, but it came at a very bad time. And I will try and resend it to you. And it's called the overview effect. And you may have seen it. And I encourage you to look at it again. I'm going to look at it again. Because when we're talking about things as huge as climate action, as huge as climate action, it's a global issue, but it's huge locally as well. Pulling back to the big picture and recognizing the urgency that we, as a community, declared back in September of 2019, declared a climate emergency. And we need to start urgently acting on that. And there's going to be unpleasant ideas that are going to be put forth. Simple things like Mylar balloons and helium and fireworks and, you know, gas-powered scooters or whatever you can think of that is our American way of life, the AWOL, if we got to acronym it. The American way of life, AWOL, is going to need to drastically change. And people who've had the ability to go up into space have seen the world completely differently than we down here have, and they have the overview effect. And so I would like for us to go to sleep tonight and think about that overview effect and carry it forward in all our planning. And again, collectively, communally, connectedly, together to do that. So thank you, council members, staff, anybody else who's here. Let's do this together for the better, if we can. And we will lead the way from the Redwood Forest to whatever New York Island or whatever. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor, and hello, City Council members. My name is Carly Tambling, and I am the president of the Entrepreneurs Club of Arcata, which has just been started as of May 7, I believe, was our kickoff weekend for Startup Weekend. The Entrepreneurs Club of Cal Poly Humboldt has done Startup Weekends in the past. And Startup Weekend is where anybody can come and pitch a business idea on a Friday night. And then the community actually gets to come and vote on the businesses that they want to see happen. And then in just 48 hours, the Entrepreneurs Club, as well as incredible mentors and pillars of the community, come through to help people start these businesses. So Startup Weekend is going to be coming back to Arcata next semester with the help of the Entrepreneurs Club of Cal Poly Humboldt and the newly-founded Entrepreneurs Club of Arcata that is happening through Arcata Main Street as well. So if anybody is interested in helping get Startup Weekend started again for the community, developing new businesses that should be here, and helping with the environmental impact as well, creating the sustainable businesses that are here already and making more as well and making them better, please contact arcadamainstreet@gmail.com.
Thank you, Carly. Okay, do we have anyone online that's wanting to comment on items that are not on the agenda?
All right, just checking for online public comment. And seeing none.
Okay, we'll go ahead and go to staff and council member updates. Do we have any staff updates for this evening?
No additional staff reports tonight.
Okay, how about council updates?
Okay, I just have, I have a couple. We don't always have to have updates. It's okay. I happened to be in a meeting today, so I thought I should update on it. So regarding our safe parking program that we've got just off of Seminole Boulevard, I know that there's been some frustration with the unauthorized cars that are out in front that are not part of the parking program. And I've been assured that, you know, there's a meeting happening tomorrow, and there's going to be some discussion on it and how we can really get that cleaned up so that the parking program can really be at its best. But so however, even though it's on the outside, you know, causing a little bit of frustration for people, I wanted to let you know about what's happening on the inside that we're not seeing, because there really are some cool things happening. And also, Karen, you were at that meeting. So if I, if you think of something that I'm not putting on here, please jump in. I believe today Darlene said that there were 10 vehicles, and they've served 12 households with 18 individuals, 377 bed nights. They've moved, three people have moved on to buildings, some to motels and at least one to permanent housing.
some to motels and at least one to permanent housing. So that's a great, I mean, it just shows right there. We've got someone from living in a vehicle into that program, now into housing. That's exactly what we're supposed to be doing. And there will be seven new vehicles entering the program Thursday or Friday of this week. And then something else that was shared at that, we were talking about the cities finalizing the appointment of a new position in the police department that was authorized at our mid-year budget. And that position will be assigned to liaise to the homeless services program, provide direct street outreach, and support the community ambassador program. And the position will be focused on outreach and service connections to individuals that receive many calls of concern about each day. So we'll have a special team really working with those that are maybe the hardest to serve in our community. And they expect that position to start in June. And also regarding the community ambassador program, I think we'll be flying that position soon for hiring. Maybe Karen, we could update us just a little.
Yeah, so that job description has just been finalized and we'll be coming to you for final approval and pay setting on June 1st. But you will probably try to fly it ahead of that and just say contingent upon council approval, which you've seen before on positions that you've already approved. So, yeah, so more next meeting on that.
Yeah, so hopefully we'll have those ambassadors on the streets this summer. And then they'll be kind of a great warm-up to Cal Poly coming back and going forward. Anything else to add? All right, so with that, a meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for attending. Oh, let's see, dates for, just kidding, we're not adjourning. Dates of future meetings, we do have a study session with the committee chairs, Tuesday, May 31 at 6:00 p.m. in council chambers. And that's going to be a great study session. We're looking at what our council goals are and what's happening in the committees and seeing how we can work together to make those happen. So that'll be, that'll be a great collaborative meeting. All right, with that, now we adjourn. Thank you.